Call the meeting to order. Mr. Clark, could you call the roll?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Musket.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance today by Councilman Ray Joe Kaczynski.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move to approve the Order of Business August 9th, 2017, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 25th, 2017 meeting. Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that the council approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of City of Dearborn Heights held on July 25th, 2017. All have submitted in the minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is Item 5, Public Hearing and Comment on Pending Agenda Items. Any comments from anybody in the audience on pending agenda items? Hearing none. The next item is Item 6, Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-26.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket and then Councilman Abdullah.
I have one. Item 6-4, and I don't know if the chief is here. I'd like to know what this is, Brother Rugged Jet RJ, what all of these are. I don't know what they are.
Renters.
Vehicle renters.
6-4, that's the new car system we got.
Okay. Councilman Abdullah, will you finish?
Yes. I had for DPW Director Bill Zimmer. Is he in by any chance?
He is not here today, but maybe one of us can answer it.
Well, that's one you probably wouldn't. Well, I'll ask just in case, in case you have to answer this. But I had a concern on one of the trees here. I know normal tree cutting, you know, with the company that we use, Dearborn Tree Service, is typically $1,000, $1,500 per tree. Every once in a while, you'll have one, $2,500. But there was one, I'm sorry, every once in a while, you'll have one at $2,000. But we had one at $2,500 for one tree, and we had one at $3,000 for another tree. And the concern I, well, I mean, I just wanted to make sure. It seems like an excessive amount for cutting a tree down, number one. And if that is what they charge, maybe it could be negotiated every once in a while. We just cap it at $2,000 per tree. I'm not sure if you could answer it, but...
When we went out for bids on this thing, it's the circumference of the trunk. And so that's what, and it's pretty standard in the industry. A couple of these, the one on Merrick, when they get these large, usually the director will show me a picture of the particular tree, or I go out and take a look at it. So...
Do you authorize it at that particular point?
Yeah, because when they're that expensive. But normally, those are serious, those are like legacy trees, and then unfortunately, a lot of times, they fall on somebody's house or a car.
Well, I have no problem with removing the trees. My, I just wanted to make sure that the dollar figure would seem a little excessive. Chris, do you have...
In those cases that they're over $2,000, he does get other quotes as well, especially for the one on Merrick. The homeowner got a quote, and he got quotes, and they were all over $7,000.
Okay, that's...
It's a huge tree.
That's perfect. Okay, that's perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for, just to make sure...
Sorry, Councilwoman Abdullah, on that one, we're getting reimbursed by the homeowner, too, on the Merrick.
Oh, partial or full?
No, full.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And then I had another question on Item Number 6-8. So I guess, Mr. Mary, well, I guess it's kind of similar situation, so I guess that's irrelevant. And then the next one is on 6-23. I had a question for Department Head Joe Hashem. This is in regards... Okay, there was an amount allocated here from payables for $30,000 for Vista Maria. And in it, they had, you know, expenses for asbestos, I'm sorry, abating of asbestos insulation and replacing some piping support in the underground utility tunnel on the campus, and it's completed. I had a, I wanted a little bit more of an explanation in regards to the $30,000 that was allocated there as far as what specifically was done at Vista Maria. And if you don't mind, for those that may be residents that don't know, just a little, at least brief explanation to what Vista Maria is.
This...
It's on, yeah, it won't sound like it's on, but it's picked up on the TV.
Okay. Vista Maria is a school for abandoned childrens, a lot of girls, the runaways, drug addicts, and what have you. They offer a lot of support. I think last time I visited, in fact, don't quote me on that, but I think it's about 300 kids that they have at the location. The money that we spent is budgeted into our fiscal years. It was $30,000 for the year, fiscal years 2016, 2017. We met with the manager, and they have decided to use it to remove the asbestos in a tunnel that connects between the, one of the buildings and the other buildings. So they removed all the wiring, they removed the asbestos, and they reran the whole new wires into the, into the other building.
The city council approves, when you approve the CDBG budget, and then later on, when they perform the work, you'll see this come through when you are one of their...
That's when we got billed for it, or when they requested for the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 8A from Mayor Paletko, 2013 through 2018, Dearborn Heights Communication Officers Association Agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Move City Council concur with Mr. Paletko, the mayor, Mr. Paletko, and approve the 2013 through 2018 agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Communication Officers Association, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
As outlined in 8A. Thank you.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Discussion, Councilman Abdullah.
Yeah, I'd personally like to make, I'd like to make a proposal that we table this. At least we have some sort of a study session in regards to this, because we've had, we've had some discussions, obviously, about possibly joining with Dearborn and other communities. And then now, at this particular point, I know the mayor had mentioned that we're going to be hiring some new officers or new dispatchers. So with that being the case, since it looks like we're moving in that direction of keeping our dispatchers, I'd like to see either a study session or just something on this before we approve this particular contract.
If I might, and I don't know if you were here for that or not, but we spent a whole evening on this, and we thought, we thought everything, at least the council members there told us to put it on, but yeah, this...
We had reviewed it, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, we're more than willing to do whatever is necessary, but...
When was that?
About a month ago.
I think you were out.
We had about a...
I was out of town, I know, for one meeting. I don't...
We had about a five-minute recitation about...
It was more than five minutes.
The contract coming on, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Executive Assistant Christine Laslow, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I put it on for council about a month ago for discussion. I had to wait to get the final okay from the dispatch union. I got that.
I know we've had conversations, but I don't know if we've had a study.
No, no, we had, we brought in our attorney and everything. We talked about the costs and the tentative agreement, and I, there's nothing in it that has changed.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Musket. Unless it happened during the one week I was gone, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, it was a month ago. I can give you the exact date. I can go back and pull it up.
I'm with, you know, I know we discussed it, but I don't remember spending a day on it. And the other thing is, I see the attached is 213, 218. And then I look at the copies here, and everything is going effective date 213 through July, or June 30th, 219. So the cover page is different than everything that's dated in the, the whole document.
Corporation Council, Mayatki, was this the case where they were negotiating past the expiration of the old agreement, so now we have an agreement, and it's dated back to 2013?
Sorry, Council Chair, I, Labor Council dealt with this as opposed to me.
But that, yeah, it's, the cover letter should have said 2019.
If you want another meeting, we're more than happy to have another meeting. But I'm telling you that, yes, this was the direction we were gaining from the public and from the council, was to have an agreement and to continue operations as we currently have in the past. And we did that. So I don't know if now there's a switch now to do something else, but this agreement was, is constituted to keep dispatch internally.
If I might add, at that meeting, I said I wasn't going to put it on the next council meeting, because council had just gotten it. I said I was going to wait for dispatch, so I, and I asked if anybody had any questions, and I didn't get any future questions, so...
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, as long as I think there are council members that are seeking a study session because they have questions, then I would concur with that and think that council members should have that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I would think that it might be wise to put this into a closed session to basically address it with, since Councilman Abdullah was not apparently present during that closed session, so that he can be privy to all the information that would be relevant.
There's a motion on the floor...
May I withdraw it?
You may. Or amend it?
Or just move to, just move to refer it to a closed session?
I'd like to amend my motion to refer this to a closed session, hopefully at the next council meeting.
Briefly, as soon as possible.
Soon as possible. Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 9A from Fire Chief Dave Brogan, lease of four vehicles from Enterprise Fleet Management.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move, Council concur with Chief Brogan's request to lease the four vehicles that are indicated in Item 9A. All details per the letter dated July 25th, 2015.
Support. 2017, excuse me.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Councilman Abdullah.
I just have, I know the chief is, oh, there we go. Okay, we got another, one of the captains. I just have a question in regards to the rest of the vehicles here. There, we had 2008, 2007, 2005, and 2007, and with multiple mileages, mileage between 84,000 and all the way up to 119,000. What are the plans as far as these cars is concerned? Are we just jongking them, or what are we doing with them?
As far as I know, they're going to be sold in auction. That's what we've done with vehicles in the past.
Okay.
And then hopefully, the proceeds we get from here would go towards the new ones?
Well, that's exactly...
Beautiful. Thank you. Councilman Musket.
Are they going to come fully marked with the seal of the fire department on there?
Yes.
Two of the vehicles that are used as utility vehicles at the stations will be. We haven't discussed what fire marshal and fire inspector vehicles will be marked.
Can I ask one more question?
You can.
Okay. One more question. I know Chief Brogan, I found, figured out he was on vacation because he didn't return my call. Quick question, and it may sound silly, but am I allowed to paint the fire hydrant out in front of my house? Because it looks real bad. I want to paint it red, like it is, and spruce it up? I don't believe so, but DPW handles painting, maintenance of the hydrants.
I think it's a specific paint.
Because I got some Rustoleum, I wanted to spruce it up a little bit and make it look good. So I guess I could get a hold of DPW then, right? Yes. Okay, thank you. I didn't want to do it, I bought the paint, but I didn't want to touch it yet, so. Sorry, thank you.
Also paint the, over the Councilwoman Clayton?
I was going to say, we did a project back in 2011 called Paint the Town Red, where we were painting fire hydrants. And I know we worked with DPW and the current fire chief, which was Andrew Gurka. And there's a specific kind of paint that you have to use, and there's restrictions on colors and things like that, I understand. So definitely working through...
Yeah, I'll get a hold of them. I just want to make sure I can do it, that's all, before I do it.
Director Zimmer.
Lieutenant, when they auction these vehicles off, anybody can, there's a business owner in the south end that's been very interested in getting the city vehicles, so you can just go to the auction and bid along with everyone else?
As far as I know, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 9B from Police Chief Lee Gavin, inspection and testing of fire pump and fire sprinkler systems.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move, Council, concur with Chief Gavin's request to approve and pay for inspection and test of the following items, a fire pump, dry pipe, pipe, fire sprinkler system, all wet pipe and fire sprinkler systems, as outlined in 9B.
Support. Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 9C from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, software purchase and training of the sign-making machine.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move, Council concur with the request of Bill Zimmer, Public Service Administrator, and approve the activity, including supplies and software, for the training of personnel who will be operating this equipment at an expense of $3,695.
Support.
Which will be paid at the completion of the training and the receipt of materials.
Support. Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 12A, 2017 Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention and Annual Meeting Notice.
Mr....
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm going to attend this. I've had some serious disagreements with the Michigan Municipal League policy as related to retirements for policy, and I intend to make our feelings known as a community. So if you're looking for a delegate, I will be attending.
Councilman Musket.
Mr. Chair, I was going to actually nominate Lisa Hicks Clayton, since she's constantly going to these meetings with MML. I know I've been to a few in two years, and I know Dave Abdullah's been to a few in a few years. But Lisa Hicks Clayton seems like she goes to just about all of those, and I wanted to see if we can consider her to go.
Any support?
I would prefer, I would prefer to, to have the mayor go on behalf of the city, being that he is, in fact, the mayor and has the financial background that he has as an accountant. I think it would benefit us in that he can act on, he can act on some of the decisions that are maybe being made.
Mr. Chairman.
The letter calls for a delegate and an alternate. Does anyone make a motion that we have a delegate and an alternate?
I could make a motion to have Mr. Dan Paletko, the mayor, as a delegate, and the alternate be Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Councilwoman Clayton, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I was just going to say exactly what you were talking about, the designation of voting delegate. The items you're voting on is the election of trustees and policy on core legislative principles, which has already been approved by the Michigan Municipal League Municipal Services Committee, of which I serve. Certainly, you know, I agree with you, the mayor is our mayor, and should have the opportunity anytime to discuss with Michigan Municipal League his concerns on the behalf of our city, in particular with retirement and those options. But I would be okay in support of that motion by Councilman Berry.
Thank you.
So Councilman Musket made a, made the original motion that I don't think was supported. Do you want to amend the motion?
Yeah.
Councilman Musket.
Well, since I didn't make a motion, and Mr., the Councilman Berry made the motion, I, I'm going to pass it on to...
Refer to Councilman Berry?
Refer to Councilman Berry and support that motion.
Okay. Any, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Experience on the General Government Pension Board advises and recommends that the expenses of attendance of these kinds of activities by public officials should be expense paid. Do we have, do we have a budget to cover expenses to attend this meeting?
I think we have a small budget, but yes. I think they cover the hotel, if I'm mistaken.
The education budget line item for council is $500 through the chair.
That should be a part of the original authorization in the motion to authorize the appropriate steps to be taken to make arrangements for the reservations, and also to call for an expense to cover the, to cover the attendance.
Yeah, I don't see our comptroller, Mr. Laub, here. Councilman Berry?
Just a suggestion, maybe that's something we can reimburse them with, once we review the expenses?
Well, that's fine and good. I just feel that one should not go empty-handed without the potential for being reimbursed with expenses out of pocket when the principal beneficiary is the entire community. That has to be understood in this proposal.
Whatever works for the council, I'm in agreement with.
Additionally, the mayor is going with a specific inquiry in regard to some of the issues that he has some concern about. So there, there is a need for him to be there. And with that said, hopefully, that the expenses will be reimbursed as goes the result of your inquiry and your recommendations to the body.
Okay. I wonder if we've eaten up the budget with the parliamentary procedure? I think that was last fiscal year.
That was last fiscal year.
I mean, I think if we, if we need to make a fund transfer, I believe we're in a position to where we can do that.
And what's the thought that we, you incur the expense, and then we reimburse, or that you, you...
Mr. Chair, I think that's for council, the money is set aside for council personnel. So I think having them, you know, pay out of pocket then reimbursement would be probably the best way to do that, unless this body agrees that if there's funds available that's going to last through the year, in that fund for council, that it can be done. I'm okay with that, too. I just don't want it to be turned into a, sorry, folks, I forgot to turn it off.
I thought we'd dogged it. Yeah, that sounds like a...
Cujo. But, you know, I just want to make sure there's, you know, we have no problems with it, you know, but reimbursement is most definitely something that should be considered.
Mr. Chairman, I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilman Kaczynski, and then Councilwoman Clayton.
Once again, a reference that comes from experience on the General Government Pension Board, the arrangements have to be made by the individual person who is going to attend, and to submit a itemized statement for the expenses, and then we'll undertake the payment of those expenses at some point.
Yeah, reimbursement. Sounds very good. Councilwoman Clayton?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that the expenditure for city council members, there's an education line item of $500 each budget year that the council body approves. However, for this item, I will tell you, I will not use that money. So I appreciate what you're saying, Councilman Kaczynski, but I will put this bill myself, because I would rather see our council members be able to use that money for education, training, and ongoing support. Thank you.
And I'm not sure I'm staying overnight. I mean, I used to work in Lansing, and so a trip to and from. I know specifically the positions that I want to have addressed, and so we'll be there on Wednesday.
It'll be available to you if the...
Under those circumstances, there might not be a significant amount of money to outlay, so...
Correct.
That's exactly right.
Still be wanting to approve a, a statement of expenses if they occur and presented to this body for appropriate payment.
So would you like me to make a motion?
We can, we can approve it, and then we'll, if anybody seeks reimbursement at a later date, we can address that.
So 12A is a received note and file? Am I correct?
Well, we nominate our...
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we did nominate, yeah.
So any further discussion on the motion?
Have we voted on the...
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 13A, Business License Renewal for Anthony All Car and Truck Sales on Van Born in Dearborn Heights. Councilman Berry?
Motion to approve the business license for Anthony's All Car and Truck Sales as outlined in 13A.
Second. Second by Councilman Musket. Discussion. This is the old Mickey Cooper's, this credit. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody here at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I'd like to announce to members of the public, I went to a committee meeting down at Duane County. We were invited by our county commissioner, Diane Webb, and I was accompanied by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton and Councilman Abdullah. Thank both of you for being there. The board voted to take the purchase agreement that was approved by the city council and forward it to the full board, which will be two weeks, I think, from tomorrow. And there were no dissents. There were some interesting questions, one about mineral rights, but I don't think that got incorporated into the, the document. But it went very well. So my, my comment to the public is that we're moving forward on the purchase of Warren Valley property. It was made very specific that the intent of the, of the city is to maintain that as a golf course, and so was met with a lot of support.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to commend you also, Mr. Mayor. That was a nice presentation that you did to the commission, so good job.
Any other announcements from anyone at the table?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to thank all the candidates that ran for council, for mayor, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to congratulate all the winners, and for those that unfortunately didn't make it, thank you for at least attempting to serve in this great country. And I'd also like to commend Clerk for well-run operation there. There was no hiccups that I know of, and I heard nothing but great comments from a lot of the residents. So good job, Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
And just to echo what Councilman Abdullah said, I spent the day not in my office, as I usually do, but out at the polls and the sunshine and talking with everyone. Thank everyone who, who participated, all the candidates, everyone. It was, things went smoothly.
That's the ten, right?
Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Our creation director, Ken Gribble.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, we'll be having our 13th Annual Citywide Garage Sale on the grounds of the Campfield Community Center, 1801 North Beach Daly. It starts at 9:00, and it concludes at 4:00, and there'll be some great buying opportunities, as we'll have at least 150 vendors there throughout the day. Weather's supposed to be great, so if you want to get the good bargains, suggest you get there early, right at 9:00 when we open. But there will be some great buys throughout the entire day. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other announcements? Our director, ECBG Director, Joe Hashem?
Just want to clarify something about Vista Maria. Vista Maria has been in existence for over 100 years. They provide care for underprivileged girls. They have their own schooling. The age of the girls ranges between eight and 18 years old. They do offer treatment, education, care, and schooling as well. So I did visit the site, and I toured the whole location, and they have some excellent programs.
Yeah, nice organization in our city.
Underprivileged girls.
Yeah.
So I don't know if I spoke before, but just to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other announcements? Commissioner Diane Webb?
Thank you. Thank you. It's great to see all of you tonight and I wanted to send out just a special thanks to the mayor and the council members, Dave Abdullah and Lisa X. Clayton, for attending the council meeting, I mean, the commission meeting today. I think it went fairly well. I think I heard a lot of comments after. They really appreciated you guys coming and, you know, it really shows that you care about the golf course and the outcome of this whole decision. I think those of you that were there saw that they were very favorably in support of you. It was a unanimous vote to move it to the full board. You also heard people talking that they didn't want to see it become a development, a housing development. So that's wonderful because I really know in their heart that they're very supportive of you and that you will have the commission behind you as this deal progresses. I think we were able to ask a lot of questions to make sure that there was no hidden surprises. And I intentionally wanted that two-week lapse between our committee, the whole meeting, and the full board meeting, rather than having it taken up the following day. I wanted the mayor and the council members to be able to hear that committee as a whole meeting and I wanted the commission to be able to hear from the city as well. And then I wanted you both to have two weeks to sit on it because anything that you might have heard there and said, hey, we need to know about this or about that, or I want to talk to my attorney about what I heard about this, I wanted you to have the opportunity to do that. It's never good to rush big decisions like that because once it's done, you have no leverage. You can't say, oh, you know, if we would have known this, we would have negotiated something differently. So I just wanted to give you time to rest with you and... But I think you guys did it. Mayor, I think you did an outstanding job. I think you had great support with your council people there and I think it went fairly well. And I'm just really excited about it moving forward. There were a lot of commissioners talking to the 1.8 million and the appraisal and, you know, what a great deal it was and that the city was able to capture it for that same price as it was gonna go to the developers for and it really is a great deal. And it's a great asset and I'm glad that it's gonna be controlled locally. I think Commissioner Al Haydis made excellent comments at our meeting as a former mayor himself, talking about the importance of local control over an asset. And, you know, it's in your community, it's gonna affect your people. And there's no better way for you to control that than to own it and just take all that with... You don't have to worry about threats like this in the future. From people that I know that work at the course, they've told me that this is not the first time that that course has been considered for sale, but probably the third or fourth time. So, you know, that whole neighborhood has to get scared about the flooding and we can just put an end to that. So, great work and I'm so proud to represent you guys. And I want to... I just want to tell all the people that your residents and the Friends of the Rouge and the Detroit Audubon Society and the people that live in Golfy Manor and the people from the south end that came up to support the people on the north end, which was really, really awesome work. We could never have stopped it without the people in this community. I've been on that commission for nine years. I've never gotten more than six letters about anything. We got over 2,000 letters and emails and phone calls on this issue and don't let anybody kid you, but that's why that proposal came off the table, because of the public outcry. They knew that politically they'd have their heads in a basket if they moved forward in that direction and they would have never heeded to their intent, their original intent, had the pressure not been put on them like it did. So way to go, Dearborn Heights. Way to go to all of you. I think this story's gonna have a happy ending and so I just wanted to come up and make those comments. And before I sit down, because I'm gonna do that shortly, I just want to say congratulations to everybody who ran, those that prevailed in the primary, wish you the best of luck in the general, and those that didn't, you know, to Commissioner, I mean, to Councilman Abdullah's point, it takes a lot to run. These guys work for about... If you divided their salary up by the hours they put in, they make less than a penny an hour. So you don't do this job for the money. You do it because you care about the community and so thanks for all of you that ran regardless of the outcome and thanks to all of you that serve. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we need to thank, if you had not had that public hearing, we may not have been able to rally around. Dearborn Heights owes you a big thanks. I hope everybody will join me in a round.
Aw. Thank you.
Well, I also seen, and I mentioned to you in your office, I mean, I seen firsthand the type of work that the commissioner does on the commission and I gotta tell you, with all due respect to a lot of them there, I mean, I seen firsthand without the public there, how much you look out for the residents. So I complimented you earlier today, but I'd like to compliment you again publicly for a great job that you do for the residents. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that, Councilman.
Mr. Chair? Councilman Musket?
We spoke on the phone at length the other day and all that I said I meant, so when it comes time, you let me know.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate you all. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Anyone else? So any residents, if you can come up and state your name and the street you live on?
My little buddy.
He was in your pocket.
He was in my pocket.
I live at 18228 Powers Avenue. Some of you already know me. I've been up and down the streets of this town. I've already cleaned up Annapolis Street several times. One of the things I wanted to first make aware is that's...
If you'd go ahead and say your name.
Thomas Vick.
Go ahead, Thomas.
That street gets very dirty. I personally filled my backpack three times full of liquor bottles on the way home from my child's school to my house and I've actually cleaned up this street several times and I did bring this up to the school district. I went into the actual administration building myself and actually showed them one of the backpacks full of trash. I've also during that cleanup, found broken light bulbs at the high school that had fell, looked like they had been changing the light bulb and it was down buried into the ground behind a bush. I actually had to dig it out of the ground, but it was shattered and just left there. And it was obviously something that had to have been done by maintenance. The Southfield Freeway side of town, there's a lot of trash over there also that I was about to start getting a group together to clean. But as any voter should during voting time, I've been doing my due diligence, learning all your campaigns and I've found information about most things except for the topic of cannabis, which I have been made aware that there have been study sessions called for in this town. I'm a patient. I have Crohn's disease. My body is literally killing my intestines and it is extremely hard for me to get medication as is from living in this city because there really isn't much around here. You have to drive out of city, it costing gas, the cost of the medication is expensive to begin with, which led me to finding out about the projects and this new MMFLA. That's the new law. It's taking place across the state. Most of these facilities are going to be shut down. Ninety percent of the places I have to get my medicine, I'm not gonna be able to get. That coupled with the Health Care Act that Trump wants to put into place, he wants to put Crohn's disease on the do not cover list. If he does that, I literally cannot get health insurance because I'm diagnosed with this disease, leaving me with cannabis. It's gonna take me being able to have these facilities just to be able to eat. So my question is, why is this being delayed? Because I know the process of Dearborn Heights, I know there's multiple stages, I know it's gonna take six months to a year for these businesses to get in place. And if the permits are allowed to be filed in December, shouldn't the city do its responsibility and have these study sessions done? Have this process underway so that people like me don't have to wait? We need these decisions done. I understand it could go against it, you could go for it. I'm not asking if you're for or against it. What I'm asking is why has the study session not been set?
Thomas, we've had study sessions and discussions and it's now up to any member of the council to bring forward a proposed ordinance, but we've had the discussion, so...
Are there meetings planned to plan said ordinance? Are these talks already planned to continue?
So the next step would be, like I say, if a member of the council wanted to propose a change in the ordinance we have. So when you say we haven't, why hasn't the study session been scheduled? It was already scheduled and had. We may have another study session.
Even if you do have a cannabis ordinance already in place, that's what I was trying to highlight, is come December, none of that matters. It all has to be rewritten. In fact, I already know, for example, Detroit, Michigan, Green Guy's dispensary is the green partner for Detroit Police. They are filing for the MMA, they're already following the regulations, which is cameras, seed to patients, start to finish. They're going to be the ones allowed to function while the rest of the ones in Detroit are shut down come December because they're writing their policies already. They've already got the legislation in place. So that's my question is, shouldn't this be moving forward? We have six months before these permits come into place. Shouldn't you guys already have your decisions to where if you are going to allow or deny how it's going to be so that these guys can get filed and get us our medicine?
Now, we have ordinances in place now and like I say, if anybody wants to change the ordinance, someone has to come forward and do that.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I know that we have a proposal before us that I have not heard any movement on and thank you, Tom, for coming in and bringing this up because I believe that we have a majority of council people, we have a majority of residents that are very interested in this ordinance. We believe it's the way to go. I'll speak for myself, I believe it's the way to go. And if in fact, the chair is waiting for a council person to make a motion to revisit that pending ordinance, I hear publicly tell you that I would like for you to bring that back so we can review it and let's act on it because as you can tell, he is just one of many residents that have inquired about this at this time and I think that as council people, we need to act on it.
Yeah, so someone would have to write a letter and we put it on the agenda and vote on a change in the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, we have a pending...
I thought, yeah.
We have a pending... I don't know why we need a letter. We have a pending ordinance out there and I think Mr. Miatki, if I may, was that under review by you?
Well, actually, Mr. Roberts...
Greg Roberts?
Mark Roberts.
Or not Greg, Mark.
That ended up bringing it and it was a proposed ordinance. It was a draft of an ordinance, if you recall.
Yes.
It was not something which would allow for dispensaries, would allow for a grow operation to end up essentially taking place. Because as was discussed in the study session, there are various different functions under this new law that can end up being licensed. Some of them would allow for dispensaries, some of them would not. And I think that's part of the issue in this situation is us receiving direction as to a consensus from the council as to what direction to go into. Whether it would be just a dispensary or whether it be grow and dispensary or whether it be these things and then, the additional issue being if you're going to end up having these, having some sort of dispersal requirement and where these would then end up being located is a, I think, a very significant issue.
I'm confused at this point. I don't know if there are any other council members that can chime in here, but I was under the impression that we were looking at complying with the new law that was coming about so that we could do a couple of things. One would be to clean up the neighborhoods from any grow operations that were there and bring the storefronts and grow operations into restricted areas so that we could...
Councilman, what I took from this is that there were multiple opinions and no clear consensus.
Well, yeah, and hold on, hold on.
That was what my sense was and I think that's what Mr. Roberts' sense was that, you know, some people were very gung ho, you were one of the people who really feels that there's a need for us to pursue this. Some people were hesitant to say something, some people seemed to be very on the fence and weighing it.
We met afterwards, I discussed it with, briefly with the mayor and Mr. Roberts and the... And discussion was, if we do nothing, then right now, we don't allow dispensaries and absent a change or moving forward, someone has to do that. So that's until somebody brings a motion... Hold on. Brings a motion before the council, that's where the law is now.
Okay, so you...
That's where our ordinances are now.
You had the discussion after the meeting and you decided that this was something that was not of interest, but I still think it should take the general consensus of the council to determine whether or not we move this forward or not.
That was the way it was left with Mark Roberts, that if nothing further is done than our, state of our ordinance is now that we don't allow dispensaries.
May I poll? May I just take a poll of the council at this point, just out of curiosity? Because I think if the council wants to move forward with this, we probably should form an agenda item that says we bring this back and review it. So may I?
If I may, I have an important detail that you need to...
Tom, hold on, Tom. I want to try to bring this to light.
What all somebody has to do is ask to put on the agenda, there's time to put on the next meeting that we enact ordinance. We've all got a draft of the ordinance with A, B, and C and then we'll vote on it.
Well, or perhaps you would end up, someone would submit such a letter and then it could go to another study session because as it stands right now, we're not sure if there's consensus and how to draft this.
It was confusion amongst our attorney.
And I agree amongst the attorneys, but I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think there was much confusion between the council members. I think we were all in support of an ordinance moving forward and somehow...
We specifically had a discussion.
But you had a discussion with you personally, not us collectively.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not diminishing what you did.
With the attorney, that it would be, it would be up, we presently have a law on the books, it would be up to any council member if they wanted a change to draft a letter and say, we enact such and such.
How would you like the letter formatted so that we can...
Say, put it, do a, put on the agenda that we address, you know, adopting the ordinances proposed, a draft of the ordinance with dispensaries, no dispensaries, with grow operations, no grow operations, you know, dispersal requirement, no dispersal requirement, and then we'll have it on the agenda and we'll vote on it.
Vote on it and move it to a study session if needed.
Right. Move it to a study session if needed.
But if we do do a study session, one of the concerns that I had about the study session that we had the last time is somehow it was not publicized. So quite honestly, I was kind of surprised, something as controversial as cannabis or medical marijuana, that there was, the people that were involved were, in this, were here. But as far as the number of residents that were here, I was very surprised to see maybe five residents here for this. So I would like to see that publicized because I, for one, you know, I'm still on the fence on this thing and I've done a lot of studying on it and I've met with tons of people on this, but I'd like to really know how the residents feel about this. So if we do, no, not if we do, I think we should do a study session on this, but I definitely feel we should publicize it in a way where the residents know and are here and I'd like, I for one, would like to hear what the residents, how the residents feel about this. Because I've heard both sides through doing kind of informal surveys with residents, but I'd like to hear from most residents as a whole, for all of us.
Mr. Chair, it'll be, we'll have the meeting, it'll be scheduled like any other public council meeting.
I know, but the last meeting was kind of, but the last meeting was kind of on, I don't know, it was just kind of on a quiet basis. I was just, there was nobody here, really. It was kind of surprising.
We had all the people from Lansing and we had...
We had the people that were, we had, the people that had a financial interest in this, but I'm talking about the residents is who I'm mostly concerned about. I just want to make sure any vote that we do, or at least that I do, is something that's not only in the best interest of the residents, but that's what most of the residents want and I'd like to hear from them.
Mr. Chair, and when we have, when we have it on the agenda, hopefully we'll move it to a study session. That'll give the residents time to hear about the study session, when we're going to have it and at what time.
I've said at meetings, you know, I'd like to hear what the residents think and I think I've gotten one email so far, but no, that'll be fine.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest a study session separate a council meeting because I don't want to restrict this to 20 minutes or 30 minutes before the council meeting. I think it's important enough to set aside to where we have a special night to where we can hear not only from the residents, whether we have a majority of residents here or not, but just from some informed people and people like Tom who have an interest in this and we can concentrate on this without being pressed for time.
I concur.
Last time we scheduled, I think like an hour and we went the hour.
No, I want it for, I'd like it a seven o'clock.
You'll need more than that.
You'll need more than an hour.
A whole, you know, a day that we don't have a council meeting.
Council Chair, I think one of the things is that even if you have people who are in favor of this in general, you have issues in terms of the gradations and what exactly the permutations of the ordinance would be, whether you're talking grow, dispensary.
Right.
And then you're talking about dispersals and to be frank...
And on that note, I want to highly, all of you...
One at a time, please, and you've really had more than three minutes.
Go ahead.
Of dispersals, you have an additional issue with respect to potentially people being not in my neighborhood. And you need to end up, I'm putting that out there, because there will be people who might be in favor of this in general, but they may not be in favor of how we would end up drafting.
But I think this would, I think this would be a conversation that would take place at that study session to have it. Now, I agree with you, and you're going to have that pushback, but that's something that should take place in the study session.
And I think, Mr. Chair, it should also be mentioned that if we did do this, obviously, there's going to be a limit, because I've had some residents ask me, you know, are we going to have these every corner, like in, you know, without naming specific cities?
That's all to be discussed.
Yeah, it would be, even if we did do this, it would be on a limited basis. So, it could be, you know, two dispensaries or two growing facilities and stuff.
But you're getting into the ordinance now. I just leave that right now.
Yeah, it'd be in the ordinance. I get that. But I'm just stating it for the residents.
State itself is only going to allow so many. That's the thing about the MMFLA.
But right now, we have an ordinance on the books, so to change it or update it, that's for somebody to bring a motion-
Well, I don't have an ordinance on marijuana.
Mr. Chairman.
We, right now, we don't allow dispensaries.
Oh, okay, we have it that way, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Last comment, Councilwoman Clayton.
So, what I'm hearing, and I do believe there's a need for public input and education outreach, we need to review. There is a proposed rough draft ordinance. That has to be further discussed among this body, and there is five licensing levels as well that needs to be discussed and decided. And I do support having a study session, because I do want to hear from our residents. I do want to have the opportunity for individuals to be heard on both sides, so your council members can make a decision. And of course, the date for that opening is December 15th, which is rapidly approaching. So, you have the three options. Either you opt in, opt out, or you do nothing, which is basically saying status quo, not doing anything. I think it's important that we have a meeting.
It's not a deadline, though. That's one of the things that was discussed at the study session, and that wasn't accurate. In other words, that the earliest you can do something is December, not the latest.
But to a person in pain, it is a deadline.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
We're, thank you. Go ahead. Because we can do it, but we can't do it right now. So, we're-
Well, are we in agreement that we need to submit a agenda item to have this go to a study session? Or do we even need to do that?
Schedule it.
Just schedule it.
You just schedule it.
If I might, the chair rules on this, but there is on the table impending list the proposed ordinance that the city attorney drafted.
Why need to call it back?
So, it would seem to me that since it's on the open impending list, at any point in time, you can bring that back.
And my recommendation, because otherwise, you're going to potentially have people who are going to, it should just be scheduled for a study session. I mean, that would be my sense of things, as opposed to, because if it gets put on, they're going to have a bunch of people are going to show up, and then there's not going to be any sort of discussion.
So, there's no sense in calling it back at this time?
I think we'll just end up using a lot of time for people who will be frustrated.
So, we'll schedule a study session right away.
Here, I can, we can do that right now, if you'd like.
We'll do it after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nice job, Tom.
I'll be watching. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, just strike a bell that kind of reminds me of the circumstance that we find ourselves in. Correct me if I'm wrong, but for the greater portion of the information that has been furnished publicly by this body, or to this body, has been information from those who are in need of use of the marijuana product.
Correct.
We have had nothing, at least I don't recall, hearing anything about the opposite side of the scale, and that is against marijuana. You have to remember that marijuana, by federal ordinance, by federal statute, is a controlled substance, and anybody in possession of it can be arrested. We still don't know, at least I haven't been told, as to how we're going to sidestep that terrible scourge of being arrested with a product that some of us are encouraged to grow, process, and sell to those people who are presumed to need it. My original thought about the marijuana issue right from the start was, is that there is an infrastructure in place for marijuana. Any doctor, any licensed doctor, who is in good standing with the state, can prescribe marijuana. And I still am looking for an answer as to why it is necessary to go outside of the infrastructure that we now have in place. Growing, processing, manufacturing, everything that goes with the appropriate investigation of a drug that needs to be done before it is proven that it is safe and not harmful. That's what the FDA looks for when they're approving a drug. And once again, the infrastructure is in place. So, I'm at a loss to understand why that infrastructure is not being used to accommodate the need of these so-called requirements of homegrown marijuana. One of the difficulties that I'm a little uneasy about is we heard within the last week or 10 days of a marijuana operation growing, growing the product. These authorized greenhouses, so to say, where they're going to be dispensed, is an excellent opportunity and a facility to sell in an uncontrolled manner the marijuana that has not been correctly processed and approved for use by the citizens.
This is purifying the process.
One at a time, please.
There is an economy, that is an underground economy, that nobody has any regulations about. And that's the thing that I want to hear from-
One at a time.
I haven't said anything.
You don't shout from the back of the room.
He's not. He just stood up.
Okay, just stood up. You don't, let the man finish, please.
That's one of several things that I want clarified before I put my voice to a yea or nay. Right at the moment, I will public state, because I don't have the proper answers, I am opposed to any of this activity in Dearborn Heights. Most of the people that I spoke to, professional and regular Joe Sixpack citizens, do not want it in our community. So, unless those things are cleared from the debit and credit side of the issue, I will be voting against, I will be voting against it unless I'm convinced otherwise to hear both sides, as Councilwoman Hicks Clayton indicated, of the story, those who are for and those who are against, by credible people who have the authority and the understanding as to what goes forward with regard to having a marijuana dispensary in this community.
And if everyone will remember, or to refresh everyone's memory, we had a presentation by Mr. Roberts, and we were told amongst other things, that if we acted at all, we could be subject to prosecution by Attorney General Jeff Sessions. So, we decided to, at that point, leave it alone. But that was the-
You decided.
One at a time, one at a time.
One of my early comments was that marijuana is a controlled substance, just like the class three and class four and the classes of medications that are controlled.
It's not on the agenda now. I understand Thomas's comments. You have to also understand, people don't just get up and when a council person is talking, say, wait a minute, no, that's wrong, and ouch out them. We're not going to run the meeting that way.
Prove me wrong.
I'm hearing you answer a question he asked.
Thomas, please, that's, you're doing exactly what I asked you not to do. Whether or not marijuana is legal or not, that was decided by state referendum and decided by the state legislature. The only issue that our city council will decide is the structure of our ordinance. Will we allow dispensaries, not allow dispensaries, have a dispersal requirement? And there's a procedure for that. So, someone, we'll set up a study session, and we'll talk about a proposed ordinance. Okay, any other, anyone else?
Jimmy Shamu with Michigan Alternative Relief, Parkway Place Street. He had mentioned it being federally illegal, and it being put in a Substance One category, not having any medicinal value. I don't know if you guys have watched the news lately, but they are currently in the process of recategorizing that.
To all the marijuana advocates here, we finished our council meeting-
Robert, you're giving me three minutes.
So, if you want to-
Can I have my three minutes?
Three minutes.
Am I not allowed to have three minutes?
I disagree with Councilman Kozinski. We're going to have this on a study session.
Robert, constable, we understand that you have publicly announced you're opposed to medical marijuana in the community.
I have announced it.
But I think there are, yes, you have, at a meeting, Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association, we have it recorded. You did publicly announce you're opposed to it. We understand your concerns and your worries, but there are patients in the community who need it. And all we're asking for is an opportunity to bring this forward to a study session. Council has asked for that, and you're not moving it forward. We would like to go over this rough draft sample ordinance that was proposed to you guys, that was currently put together illegally, had a one grow put in it, nothing else, and discuss the matter at a, you know, couple study sessions, to determine which way we'd like to go with this matter. There is plenty of community members here that need it. For you guys who don't need it, we understand, it's not important. But for those who need it, it's desperately important. So, you know, if it's going to continue to drag out for, you know, another few months or four months or five months down the road, let us know. That's at least what's going to happen. But there are people who need it and want it, and all it is, is five different licensing types to determine, distance from certain establishments such as schools, parks, churches, you know, religious institutions, and what zoning districts you'd like them in, and how many license types from each and every license. I mean, it's something you decide at a study session and then decide to vote on it. You bring it forward to the public once you've made that conclusion. But to prolong this until after the election or silence the issue when there's people who need medicine, I think is unfair to the public. That's all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? State your name and the street you live on.
Yep. Deb Brown England, Silver Lane. Just so you know, there is a contingency of people that live in the city that do not want to have any type of medical marijuana grown or sold in our city to preserve our bedroom community. And so, I do agree with Councilwoman Kozinski in the things that he says. It is a Schedule I federally illegal drug. And currently, even though you may hear otherwise, Jeff Sessions is also asking for the money for the DEA to actually go after the medical marijuana grows also. So, we do appreciate the opportunity for you to take it to study session, and thank you.
Thank you. It is true. Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, just a second really quick for the benefit of the residents. Wayne County is holding a hazardous waste day this Saturday, August 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Westland Shopping Center. And they'll take, you know, paints, old household paint, floor wax, furniture polish, nail polish, you know, all that, what?
I got a lot of paint.
Oh, okay, yeah. Fluorescent bulbs, computers, CPUs, printers, keyboards, old cell phones, fax machines. The things that they will not take is televisions, monitors, radioactive material, explosions, explosives, ammunition, household waste, yard waste, industrial waste, tires, appliances, or roofing, or concrete materials. But it's at Westland Mall this Saturday from 8:00 to 2:00.
Does the paint have to be dried up?
Nope. Just closed up.
Okay.
Yep.
And radioactive waste, I guess I could get rid of it in North Korea, right?
No, no, well, you know, as long as you don't get rid of it in Michigan, I don't care where you put it. That, I'm sorry, I just forgot to mention that earlier. I think it would be helpful to the residents to know. If anybody has any questions about it too, they can call my office. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Meetings adjourned, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.